Property line, twenty-two feet in violation of the front yard setback. So we would request a relief from that twenty-two feet so as to maintain the parking area that is there.
This is a pre-existing parking lot?
This is a pre-existing parking area, yes. The owner wishes to expand his business where before the planning board, he's going to want to add additional spaces in the rear of the building, which is requiring some alteration of the parking back. We're gonna have the separate entrances for the rear part of the building and for the front part of the building. The parking that is within the front yard setback, if we make that sort of, let's just say more handicap friendly, currently there is no striping or anything like that, but if we sort of formalize that as a handicap spot, then that will provide the easiest access to the front and upper floor, what is currently the main part of the office.
Is there currently handicap accessibility for these people?
Currently, there is a, well, there is, there is a handicap spot on the lower lot. I brought the, I realized that would have provided the existing site plan to use. This is the current site. Minus the parking lot that's in question. So there's it, so you pull in, there's a handicap spot here and there's a sort of handicap access to the lower floor of this building. Our plan to be expanding, which is going to sort of be in this area, is to remove this lot. Is to make this the handicap spot, provide an easy handicap access to the upper floor of the building, which currently there is not.
Oh, so this is not existing?
We are gonna make it wider, but in the, not, we're not gonna sort of exacerbate. Not gonna increase our violations of the front yard setback.
So the handicap spot that there is now is actually still okay, correct?
The handicap spot that is now will be taken over by a building.
That's what I was asking, is it wider and more?
Well, yes, there's no whole place. The building has been expanded this direction, the handicap spot plus the rest is done here. So we're adding some parking in this direction and we're enhancing parking that is here so that it's proper. It's a little shallow currently and it'll be formally a handicap accessible spot with this sort of striping off. Vehicle side, striping on the driver's, which is also gonna be expanded.
I guess the real question is if the parking lot is existing? You know.
I'm just looking at this for a second also.
Okay, because.
Can I, oh, I apologize.
What triggers the application?
So we were before the planning with this and they were saying, well, you have parking that's in violation of the front yard setback for the light industrial district or the L one. So they can approve the site plan with them.
Well, because my, I'm kind of curious and I realize that you're from our plant resource and that from Shains and I'm kind of curious because this, how this parking came about and that's probably why you're here because this was originally a residence. The car was just up there. Remember, see?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was required to.
You mean the house?
Yeah, so the, so the, this new building was originally a single-family residence. At some point, okay, prior to my tenure, it became an office, okay? And it would have needed any more approval. So I'm assuming that, I don't assume, okay, that the reason, the reason I'm playing with session here is because this lot here may not have been part of the approval process?
That lot was not part of the approval process.
So, so they installed this lot in 1995?
That lot was installed in nineteen ninety-five.
Okay, so this lot was never received the front yard approvals. So that's to this lot is in violation of a current placement and that must be right up here.
As opposed to if it was sort of pre, either predated the zone and then it would be?
Right, which was.
Such as like the house itself would get the setback, but since that's a pre-existing performing.
How, how is this song now? It used to be.
It's like, it's like that's you.
Yeah, that's you, okay. Well, I guess the other question is because of light industrial, that same setback rule follows light industrial?
The setback rule, the setback that is seeking relief for is the light industrial setback.
Okay.
So there's no more, forget about the residents, there's no more that. But that's why it's here, it's here because this parking lot was installed and had the proper range.
Stacy, are you referring to the back parking lot or the front?
I'm referring to the front parking lot. The rear parking lot appears to be proposed and I was just going into the code book to take a look at that to see what the requirements are for the rear yard setback.
But this doesn't say proposed parking on, on.
No, it does not. That is not there.
No, though, I mean, my understanding, there was no, we're not requiring a relief from the rear yard setback.
No, I understand that, but his question is, is that existing now?
That is, yeah, that's, no, that is.
Yeah, it would help if it has an existing, right?
Yeah, so, so these planning plans are not clear to me. If, if I, from.
Well, I apologize if the plan aren't clear. My, this, what we have here is a plan that we proposed to the planning board. I believe it was meant, the part of the parking lot that was in question was the part that was within the front yard setback.
This one?
Yes, which now, so as Stacy's saying, the sort of the parking lot in question that was, is within the front yard setback was installed in nineteen ninety-five. The owners were paving their parking lot and they would say, well, you want to add some parking here.
So this and this are the, are the same thing?
This, no, they are not, this.
This doesn't exist.
This does not exist, this is a site plan proposal, yes, this is what is before.
So, so what should have been submitted to us was the before and after?
The reason that I did not do that, I apologize, is just as a part of this that we were seeking a variance for. Only the parking.
Okay, so, so this has nothing to do with us?
Well, I would say that, but as far as I understand, we are applying for to seek a variance for the front yard parking.
For this, this?
Which, well, we were proposing in front of the plane.
Okay, I got it.
So what, what we are doing with the rest of this, while, while I don't believe that we're in violation of any sort of additional variance questions zoning board, we are not currently seeking.
So you were sent us because of this?
Yeah, exactly, because it was discovered as part of the future proposal. So it, it's something that's already there. There's a lot that's already there that is technically in violation, but it's already there. They're, they're gonna go westward to expand that, but the point is that right now there's an existing violation that they're requesting variance for, it's been in there for twenty years.
But, I mean, I was, there was no intention to.
You don't learn this, man.
It was cleared up, it's fine, it was just a matter of the, now, again, so the planning board, you know, and I guess they all say they're thinking this, but they appeared, you know, receptive to the idea, the parking area understood the idea of wanting to sort of increase, you know, certain light access ability to the front and upper part of the building. However, of course, if it's sort of violation zoning, we can seek a variance.
Well, I would have thought that they would have done that all at once, that they would have sent you here and everything you needed to variance for.
I don't believe there are any other parts of this that we're going to need. And I would agree that.
I'll just ask one quick question because it doesn't show on that. The edge of, your edge of being the rear, the rear parking. How far is that, do you know how far it is to the parking lot?
Um, I don't know, I can, but I also don't, when you're not here.
No, I know, but I'm asking just, just to make sure someone, the planning board didn't overlook this.
I got you, fair enough.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not playing you a hard time about it, I just kind of. I just don't want you to come back.
That's, this is our planning board's agenda, which is showing a code. Sort of trying to figure out. Yeah, so I don't.
Because you just, you can't, you missed the show. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, otherwise, and I, I believe that if, they don't, if you can't have, you know, parking in the front yard setback.
You can approach into the side yard and you can approach into the rear yard, but to within three feet.
Okay, but we, other than this sort of pre-existing in violation parking areas, we are not, I mean, so the new building that we're adding back is all within performing setbacks. Everything else, as far as I understand, sort of the planning was, is in, we're not seeking air.
I guess the big question, the double jeopardy question, is because you're adding space, you need some of your parking spaces.
Yes, so we are increasing the parking.
Right, you're increasing the parking, so with increasing the parking, that you take into consideration if this passes, that you wouldn't have any more spaces in the back, correct?
We will have to add spaces in the back because we are going to build a new building where there currently are spaces.
No, no, you misunderstand what I'm saying. Between, this is supposed to be the new proposed.
Yes.
So with this parking area and this parking, that brings you to required spaces that you need for this building?
Yes.
So, that's my point. So without this, and you're talking about, I guess, three spaces, most the handicap, two spaces in the handicap, you would have to add them to the back parking lot, period?
Yes, which raises, you know, which is a feasible fit, we can do that.
Okay.
I mean, so, you know, there are no alternatives, there are. The owners are seeking to retain this parking because of the possibility, they want to allow this sort of easier accessibility to the front of the building. They can, you know, can sort of accommodate the parking all in the rear. Our goal, I guess, is, you know.
But you are.
It's an issue, as you say.
You're gonna have a rear entrance.
We're gonna have a rear entrance for the sort of rear part of the building, but we're not gonna have, this will be the closest parking spot for the accessible, to have accessible access to the upper floor, the main floor of the building. Currently, it's an accounting and wealth man.
When was you going to?
Is the idea of keeping the front space there, if that were lost, the handicap parking would have to move to the rear?
Then the handicap parking would be.
And that would be helpful, this would. That's accessible.
I mean, no, I don't have that specific, I don't have the distance.
It appears as though the slope is downward toward the back.
Right.
Which would make it more difficult for someone to roll, essentially roll from the back.
I mean, it's not an unbearable slope, but it is.
So, so if you park, if you park at the spot we're talking about, if you get out of the car, you walk directly sideways into the front entrance where there'll be a ramp, okay? For, for handicap, otherwise you'd go down somewhat of a slope all around the back, so have to come up that slope and then, and back up from.
Well, is the slope, is the slope in front too?
Yeah, but you're, you're right next to the entrance.
It's, it's.
Well, if you look at this path, I mean, it's a long, it's a long, it's a long, it's not a straight path.
No, the reason, so that is to minimize the slope, it's the long path here to sort of try to keep up with one to twenty slope up so as to not have to happen.
What would be the slope in that?
Okay, almost right here, Joe, looking at this picture right here, it, it doesn't, here gives the indication there's a much greater slope, but as you look at this picture, the slope isn't.
It's not, it's not an extraordinary slope, but I, I mean, I don't, I don't think, saying that it's just a.
Sean, where are you in the site plan process with planning?
Well, this was one of the few issues that they wanted sort of create clarity on, creating storm of water, the septic or something, both of which also will sort of end up, you won't have the site plans, but in sort of this larger rats area here. So the current location of the septic field is gonna have to be relocated because it's beneath where they're going to be building.
So, and, and we, this board has not yet received any recommendation from the ZDA or any from the planning board?
No, and I just.
Not so high. It's fair to send it, they would at some point make a recommendation.
And our understanding is that they would seem to recommend it with, or, you know, encourage it or give their blessing or however we want to say it.
We don't have it yet.
No, no, I don't think so.
But it's not set for public hearing, if it's set for public hearing, we also have to get notice from our planning board that it's on for a request of variance. And then at some point their process, maybe if they actually do not, they may be in a position to give a recommendation.
Then they provide a formal, their formal position only two years.
They typically will submit a formal recommendation to this board.
I believe.
Twenty pieces of disposable list. That's kind of why the planning board will go through the site plan process and they're kind of pretty much done. If there's a variance required, they'll send it to this board, get some recommendation about variance. Or, in fact, there's still maybe issues here of drainage that they have to do the site plan process, but they'll typically make a recommendation about that request.
Was this request sent to us by the planning board or was it sent by Stacy? No, the planning board.
I think it comes to this board as a result of this New York State statute that says, if you're, before the planning board first site plan renewed and variances are required, you can get to the ZDA in the first instance.
So they don't all.
You don't have to come from an idol of the building sector, you can come as part of your application for a handicap.
Yeah, I want to see the slopes, the difference between the two, I want to see the runs. You know, there's a few things I like to see, you know, and I understand why the ZDA department obviously told you why. You know, I get, you know, the entrance to the back, where it doesn't bring you, where it does bring you to the front of the building, you know, what's the difference? If you're entering the rear from the front, I mean, there's, there's plenty, there's so many questions out there about taking three spaces and adding them back here, you know? Your drainage is, you're still gonna have to drain, this is gonna be somewhere along this, you can't have a pond here and you can't have a pump here, so, you know, is it advantageous to just maybe go back here? You know, maybe it helps you drainage, I don't know, there's a lot of questions, I'm just wondering.
That's basically the planning board.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm reading here, but I don't.
So, so.
I'm just trying to say, I want to have an answer.
But are these, I guess what I'm not sure, what I was understanding is these are questions that we're dealing with the planning board, but this would be the issue that's related to, that we would seek a variance to. Are the other issues?
If the planning board said, no, I'm sorry.
No, yes, the planning board will review those things, but if your board members, the variances are asking the same information, we could be advised to just.
Good, well, then we'd be happy to provide the planning board some of that.
Am I correct that if this was removed and brought to the back, that you wouldn't be here?
That's correct, okay.
All right.
All right, in terms of why you're here, just go over with me how much different space you need for this parking space? Are you enlarging it by so many feet?
We are enlarging it by a certain amount of feet in, within this, outside of the setback, or let's say within the allowable buildable area, but we are not increasing its violation of the setback.
Okay, but we need to know what that means too, if you're enlarging it, we should know that.
So your increase is more to the back?
The increase is entirely, I mean, as far as, you know, again, now, you know, I'm meeting with the planning board, our sense from them, and I guess is, they are receptive to the parking in that location other than that it's in violation.
I got it, there, there is the line of fifty yards setback right there.
Yes.
Okay, that's to there, this is the portion of the lot that is in violation.
Yes, I got it, okay. So, again, I apologize, we're not providing any.
No, just saying, these are questions that would come from, I would ask that, you know, if you really want to hear to go back and take it down. You know, do you have the roof, is it good an approach on your drainage, you know what I mean? There's somebody, you know, there's a lot of variables that are.
Yes, so, I mean, for instance, can this, can we sort of hold that line and expand in this direction? It is possible, we are also sort of putting, you know, hopeful to have a leach field in this zones, prefer not to sort of further approach there. We would like to limit the sort of increase in, in sort of asphalt and so by sort of working on what is there, though put in a violation in nineteen ninety-five, you know, I guess, ask for forgiveness for that for some, at some point and say, well, we can sort of take that, not increase the violation, make it more acceptable, make it more accessible, you know, and sort of have it work for the new accessible in this, the town. You know, we acknowledge there are other ways to do that, this would be the preference, but if it deserves as long as it exists.
I understand what you're saying, probably, but like some of the questions I said and some of the other members, I think it's a good idea, because without that information, I would tell you, no.
Stacy, are you allowed to put a leach field in a front yard setback? It will all be on the ground, you can never see it, but is, is a leach field, in other words, that is the, the leach field would be up? No, this is just a general question, if, if you had.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The leach field that I'm, I apologize, is the, the well is towards the front of the house, the leach field to be up there would require a pole, which would make no sense.
It would be a.
I mean, obviously, all in the size of the rain. So the less asphalt added towards the rear part, you know, of building the bed, the drainage.
Stacy, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I misunderstood or you mispoke. When someone asked you about, are you increasing the existing parking area in the front yard? And you said yes, based on this drawing, does it really appear that you're increasing the parking? It looks like you're decreasing the south line and increasing just a tad on the rear line?
Well, I guess, I mean, it's, we are not increasing it or decreasing it substantially.
You're decreasing it substantially.
I'm not, I mean, we're not decreasing it substantially, we're just sort of formalizing the difference.
You're squaring it up a little bit.
We're squaring it up and making sure that there's sort of proper, you know, sort of dry way and access. But again, all of that is without.
I, I just, when you said it, I, I thought you said you were increasing it substantially. I was looking at it and saying, well, that's not what it thinks there, so I just kind of wanted to clarify.
No, I did not, no, no, we're not increasing it substantially and we're not increasing the overall impervious area substantially. It's, it's overall, it's overall a minimal increase in impervious area for the whole site, most of which were, you know, very little of which is within the, the front yard setback, I guess, settled. Our understanding would be we're not issuing specific to the, the variance request that we were seeking, which is related to maintaining, enhancing this parking, which is within the front yard setback.
And then if you know, if I'm not, this is what I want to clarify from, it's great to hear what you guys are saying because you do this for a living. What is our area of jurisdiction in this process specifically? Okay, because we're getting into what they're doing behind and westward and all that, which sounds like what's going through the planning board or whatever, okay? I, from my blaming perspective, I don't see that as what the specific request of the zoning board is, the specific request of the zoning board is that there's a pre-existing area that's been in about twenty years in violation, okay, and can we get the variances for that particular piece? Does it matter what happens everywhere else? Because that doesn't seem like that's our area of jurisdiction, or am I wrong?
Except to the extent that we, some of the members have some questions, like they say, if you need a certain required number of spaces, you need so many spaces. Without preserving the ones in the front, those spaces would have to go in the back. That's what Joe was asking.
Okay, okay, yeah, they would have to shift, okay.
Something would have that, there's some interplay between the potential loss of board spaces in front of the ones in the back.
Or they could just move this whole thing back as long as they're behind the fifty yards setback.
So, the, the question is though, and this is why you're asking this question, just to understand, by moving the front parking back behind that setback line, they're decreasing the area for their leach field, so will they have enough? So I mean, that's why these questions are being asked, to give you a full picture of, could they put this somewhere else? And if they could put it somewhere else, what are the consequences of doing that? Okay, is by who, is because this is existing now and, and if we increase the park, take this out and increase the parking in the back, is that gonna give the neighbor more water? You see, you have all of this kind, you, you do have these things that you do want to look at and consider those. Considering the.
And what would happen?
Plus, any, any spaces in the back means getting rid of this paint service.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Often, instead of, in all, most of the issues that the applicant would want to address before you say, in effect, let us use this area here without having to increase there since it already exists. Once again, why don't we set it down for public hearing? At some point, you've got to go through the planning board process, knowing what you hear here. And that process may help bring to this board some answers about, we talked to the planning board about this, we talked to the planning board about it, here are problems with it, I mean, you've had a sense of some of the members here.
So, now, all right, so if we have some level of blessing, let's just say from the planning board, if they have, if they sort of put that in formalized, you know, letter, or is that something that the zoning board will seek from them, do you seek their opinion or do we request that they provide their opinion if they're, if, you know, more individual members on it, I guess?
Kelly, you will give our planning board notice of the application and of the, of the public hearing. We've got a section in our statute that basically says, they have our fifty-sixty days within which we will give a recommendation. In the absence of doing that kindly, it is presumed that, that they do not object, okay? I do not see our planning board to ignore it, typically they will respond.
Okay, so you.
Are you gonna be ready for the public hearing next month?
Yes, I mean, do I, well, do we need, well, I guess that's the question of do I need to, we need to appear with the planning board formally to have them say their position on performance?
You may, well, I don't know, you're not due back before then?
We are, we're just, we have, we're dealing with the septic and.
Struggling, so. I wonder, I wonder if you do back there?
Uh, probably, as I would estimate, September.
Should we?
Oh.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't know this.
What is the, I guess, what is the?
We're once in a while.
We need, we need the planning board's recommendation one way or another.
He won't be back before the board, before our next, the ZDA is next.
No, he would not, so, so it's probably too late for you to show up here.
For sure.
So what, so we need to get back in front of the planning board, say we're, we're gonna, we want to keep the parking where it is and then say, okay, this, this, everything's approved bar to that, so now go before the zoning board is that?
And let them at least give a recommendation on this, because it's a commercial, doesn't that have to go with the car?
So, I mean, in the, in the notes, in the, you know, it was like modify parking in front or request variance, so, I mean, they sort of, I'm taking that to mean they say, go get a variance for the parking.
That aside, did they consider the possibility that if this board denied the variance, their site plan process is now come to a loop because they don't have enough parking?
Or, well, okay, or I guess if this, if this board were to deny it or if there was a public issue against it, then other means would be sought to provide the required parking.
Right, then you'd be back in front of the planning board again with another different site plan?
Yes.
Shouldn't we know that by?
Can I see your traffic chief just to.
Well, it's a tiny word, I'd say, because why we would recommend to you that you not deny it because there's this physical problem, this physical, that different site plan, and it sounds like that's what you want to hear from the planning board. Sounds like that's what you want to hear from the planning board. And Sam, I guess I'm just saying aloud, but it seems like the applicant might want to know that before. And then, because if this board denies the request for here, you've got to do the, draw on before the planning board.
Then, yes, we have to modify the planning, the site.
Based on what I, what I just read on the tracking sheet, that's one of five or six items that you need to take care of. He, they went to one planning board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, they've only gone to the planning board meeting so far. He needs to go back, he needs to prepare new maps, show him contours and things. They're not done with, they're not to scare you, but they're not done with you yet.
And I don't believe it.
Then they're not just waiting for this, he's going to say, okay.
No one thinks that, I understand that there are multiple steps. This was one of the steps in the process, as far as I understand, and that we're dealing with this step amongst other steps. Because if this, if this parking area is, is an issue that is not resolved in this fashion, then we will have to try to resolve it in other fashions. So it seemed us wise to, to sort of get the position on this as this process is going and not wait till then. And not have to have our leash field.
The effect between boards are.
Well, no, and I, I mean, as far as, my understanding is that we would be going back to the planning board with a, if, let's just say everything went well. And we'd be going back to the planning board with an allowance with a twenty-two foot relief from the front yard setback for the purposes of this parking. So that from their perspective, that they could say this parking is in conformance with the zoning board, so that that issue then is resolved. There are other issues that they, that are in play that we will resolve with that, but that this is one of them.
But I think you've already heard from a couple of members on the board at least that are looking at it, maybe wanting it to come from the other way around. Let's give the planning board, give the planning board an opportunity to look at this and, and maybe consider the little alternatives to this plan if those spaces disappear. I just don't think there's enough information, you know, so I'm not sure if you're looking at it. Variance really being granted by this board yet?
No, though I said, we did not manage to bear that in mind. Again, my understanding is the process that this would go to a public hearing. Neighbors would be made aware, if there was anyone had an issue presented. The planning board would make their application. This would then be brought to the county's.
So, so session, we're talking to.
We already noticed from one neighbor that says, I have some concerns about previous.
Yes, well.
Probably the more appropriate board for that would be the planning board.
By all means, just because this is.
Those questions.
Yes.
Rely for their, for the answer before the planning board on the issue also of is more parking going to have to be at the back? If this variance is done.
Well, then when is the time to do this variance still? That's the question.
That's what I'm wondering. It seems to me that, and, I mean, I, well, you're right, at some point you need to be here. I'm just wondering if, what you heard tonight, the planning board may need to chime in a bit more on this application and some of the physical problems that are there because of this parking area in front. So this variance isn't granted, this plan doesn't work for that?
No, then this plan would have to change, which would, so which would be, to my understanding, would be better to have that in advance of, of being at the end of this, which, where this parking area being relocated will, will change the broad operations, will change the location conceivably of the leash field and other things. And that, that having this in, brought up, I guess, to the zoning board in a public hearing initially, provides us with an understanding of which direction this will go. I mean, again, this would be, it's, you know, there is a preference to sort of, in an attempt to sort of provide sort of a easier route to apportion this building, you know, that we want to retain what was done, I guess. But, and at no point are we saying that there is no alternative. We believe that this is the best alternative.
But isn't it possible that if this board denied the request for the variance, it discontinued that from law? I'm just saying, is it possible then, that you go back to the planning board and say, did the ZPA deny my request for the variance? Because the planning board says, we don't like the new plan. We wish they had granted new variance and left this way and this way because they didn't see a need. They may not like the new plan.
More review from the planning board is also going to give the planning board the opportunity to give a clearer and better recommendation to the ZPA.
Do they, okay, so are you saying that you don't seek and they don't provide their recommendation at the public hearing? You're saying without them coming to you and saying, we think you should offer this or whatever their petition was?
Well, we're going to send it to them, they may not, you know, that they went in the ordinary course and they're supposed to make a recommendation to this board within sixty days of their request. This also has to go to the county planning board.
Yes.
Because it's not a county board. It's supposed to go then with a, a full submission, really. I guess I'm just concerned, I'm not sure there's a full submission here for either the county to do this. What if the county came back with a recommendation and said, we think the variance should be denied of all, we should go in the back just because this is all they have in front? Then we can do it if you want us to do it and send it to the county and send it to the town planning board and see what they come back with.
Is that, I don't know, is that an offer or is that?
I mean, if you want, if you want this board to do it, we'll do it and maybe see what happens. Well, instead of delaying it, we'll at least probably hear something from the planning board. But I'm just concerned.
What are you, I mean, I guess, what is the next step in this process? Are you, I guess that's why I'm not sure what the next step in this process is right now.
Would be for this board to either set a public hearing or with the applicant's consent, maybe not set the public hearing just yet until the county maybe has an opportunity. But before the planning board, let's see what.
What is the value of delaying the public hearing? I guess I'm not sure if I understand.
I'm only to get you back to the planning board to maybe, so that you can get some recommendation out of it that helps to answer some of the questions that some of the members have asked tonight.
So, so if I can jump in?
That's not helpful, that's okay. We'll set a public hearing and see where the jumps fall, I suppose.
If he's going to submit more information as requested by the members, um, doesn't the public have a right to view that information and speak on that in public hearing?
Well, that's what I mean, that's public hearing, some of the members of the public, including your neighbor next door, maybe want to chime in on that.
So, so.
We call the public hearing.
So, so based on this plan, we don't really know if there's added a parking, if there are a number of spaces based on the size of this building that has no dimensions on it? So our really only concern is, is the variance for the granting of the fifty yard setback where it has parking within it now. That's, that's all that's. And, you know, if, if you go through that process and, and we deny this, as the attorney has said, that really puts you back to, sends you square one again.
Plus, I think we maybe ought to be looking at the, that's the site plan that's before the planning. This is in some ways different than what it got to look at. And how I understand this was done for the zoning board appeals, but both of the boards might better be looking at the same documents, I guess, that one suggested.
Which is certainly reasonable, though this, I mean, this, again, we were here before the zoning board as a result of one of the elements that they were saying, we understand, we're desired to do this and we appreciate the idea and if you should go, if you go before the zoning board, we'll give it our blessing. So there's a, you know, but without a variance, you can't have parking there.
Right, but we also don't know what is required and what you're providing. So we don't know if we're providing additional parking spaces that are required, which would help them make a determination on whether or not this is needed.
That's, okay, I mean, I, I guess, at, in the application of this, I did not believe that we, I don't want to say irrelevant to this board, but that was not part of, or what this board was, was reviewing. That in good, kind of, whether in good faith or whatever, we were dealing with those issues.
I have to ask you a question, you, you, you want us to give you a variance, leave parking spaces. Ask me a reason why. And the reason I can only come up with it is because of my experience says, okay, you need a certain mass parking for this size of building. Required?
Yes, so, but it's, but in the application, we're, I mean, we're saying these.
Well, that, that helps me also think about why you might need it, why you don't need it. So I, I need to know this and then I also need to know, I want to know, what, what's the difference if I put it in the back? We, we put it in the right place, what's the slope? You said there's a slope there, there's a slope in the back. What's the difference, you know, I mean, I need to know these little things because that helps me come up with an understanding of what can be done, what might be able to be done, and what we maybe could sit here and think, maybe it's okay to do this out of it. There's no information, you're not giving us enough. I'm, I'm giving you information, what are you realizing and that, you know, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to like, kind of help you say, you know, this is what we need to know.
I understand, I understand.
And it's, I can come up with ten items right now, but I gave you two. I mean, if I started talking, you know, I could really go on this, you know, I mean.
So, you're not in the business of designing your site plan. You're just in the business of.
And, but I mean, a lot of, not a lot of boards are in the site plan that are disputing this variance request of this park.
So there's a lot, a lot of.
But I understand, I understand, a lot of your saying there are, what you, that you have questions that are unanswered that will be related to this parking that you want.
We said, no, it's a very drainage, you know, I mean, right there, you know? What does that, what does that, what does that do for you? I mean, you know, maybe, maybe it might change my mind thinking, okay, well, it's gonna, if you can't put this drainage back here, can't, you know what I'm saying, you know, maybe I gotta think about that, you know, but I don't want to think, I don't know. I don't know, just want to get this.
Okay, can we call a halt to that and just decide whether or not next month is a good time for you to come back before this board?
Well, I guess I, I'm not sure about that question right now.
Well, you know, Pat and Jones, it seems like a cart and horse, and we're going back and forth, you know? What, is, is it contingent on the planning board saying, okay, this is all in order, you need that, you need that zoning variance? Or we say, okay, based on the information we have, uh, you know, we can or cannot grant a variance, but ultimately the planning board is going to make the decision on the ultimate project. Uh, if we don't have enough, enough information, as I'm hearing tonight, to make that determination on the variance, then we can't make that determination. But can, can the variance be determined in and of itself, outside of everything else that the planning board has to decide? If it's, if it can't, okay, then we can't make a decision. I mean, am I reading that correctly?
I think it can.
Just, you take it or you don't?
I think it can, we decide, because we're, we're, we're in a position with unlimited judgment to make whether or not we grant them the setback. We're not in a position to tell him about drainage.
No, no, I'm just trying, you're a hundred percent correct, but, you know, I'm just trying to say.
Well, again, to pass the point, is, is we, that we have this square to decide on, okay? And that's our jurisdiction. If, if we decide that within this square, you know, there isn't, there isn't a reason to make a decision, to make that decision, is that decision dependent on everything else? If it's not, then you can make that decision.
Right, our decision is just a setback.
That's it.
Just a setback.
An existing situation.
Right.
Okay.
One, one of the questions I've currently asked to answer is whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance.
That's not it.
He, you may be prepared to answer that and say, yeah, it is, I can always put the core spaces back here.
But the planning board might tell him that we grant.
And I have said that, I mean, there are, we, there are alternatives that we can explore and however they all sort of, I guess, and we're not in a situation where if this parking is in there, we're lost and stuff. And we never even, we, I feel very clear about it, this is an existing parking lot that we want to use as, as the easiest access for accessible parking spots.
Gotcha.
You know, and, and not, there is no hidden hardship. If we had to do it another way, it can be done lightly. And, you know, so when they answer that question, can, is there a feasible way to do it? Yes, this, we believe is the best way to do it. It is the preferred way to do it. It is what we feel is minimizing the service way to do it. Now, there is an issue legitimately because it's an existing thing that was done in violation of the zoning. As far as I understand, I don't, I don't know that zoning was in nineteen ninety-five. But, I mean, there are other factors here, so I, I guess, I mean, from our perspective, we would feel comfortable in a public hearing and raising this and, you know, addressing any drainage issues that, that any neighbor may have and goes to this parking and saying what it is.
We, this board is not going to address those drainage issues. It's not the board with the setback.
No.
Right.
So those have to go to the planning. Which, and yes, and they don't.
So can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chris. Can he request us like to say, let's just do this, let's, let's get it over with, the parking? We've come over the road right now, is that?
No, 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 not good. Even if he wants you to do that.
Okay, okay, just asking, because it sounds like that's what he's looking for.
I, that is not, we're looking for.
If you want us to go forward, that's why I said, if the applicant wants us to go forward, then the board puts a six account for a public hearing.
Okay.
Send your notices to the town planning board. The town planning board may sit there and say, we've got sixty days, but we're not going to see the applicant in the bill. Those sixty days are almost expired.
Okay.
And so we don't make any recommendation to you.
They can do that, I guess, is there, is there a speculative attack or?
I don't know what they would.
No, I don't know what they'll do either.
And the county could say, they sent it to us, but we don't have everybody's home record. What does your planning board say about this?
Do those have impacts?
Then we don't know.
Okay, do those have impacts on the public hearing? Or are those just additional pieces of this process as far as we have a public hearing? The, the county board says we need more information. The planning board says we're going to wait for whatever reason to respond. Do those impact the public hearing? Is that why you're suggesting that we delay the public hearing? Or does that not have any impact on whether or not the public is? But it hasn't, has a, has a position on this?
They have impact on the public hearing? I mean, I don't know.
What I'm asking is, I guess, let's say, so let's say there was a huge, just wave of support from the public during the public hearing. And we still didn't have an answer from the county or the planning board. So then theoretically, at that point, the zoning board say, well, we require those boards to make their determination before we can grant, deny this variance. Or they say, well, we don't have enough information, so we do not. Is that, I guess, because that's what you're.
Well, the public hearing does not force us to make a decision when we're together. It's just a public hearing, right?
It's just, it's just a public, it's a public hearing, however, if, if the county planning board says, you send it up to us, but we don't really have any information about the drainage issues, even this parking lot, if that's going to happen, they, they could come back and say, then because we don't have a full record, we don't recommend it. If the county comes back strongly and says, or we recommend denying, then you've got to have a full and one book. You two doesn't do it.
They would not recommend doing that.
Then you, then you.
No, though at the same time, if the county were in our petition, we're not alleging any necessarily or, you know, absolute difficulty related to drainage, but for other reasons that we are presenting. To me, it would make sense for the county to say, we don't have information about drainage or rear yard, side yard setbacks or what, I mean, you know what I'm saying, and as far as, we're saying, we're presenting this as what we believe is the most, the limited disservice and most efficient way to provide parking in this relation to the main part of this building. We are not claiming drainage charges. We're not, we, you know, acknowledge that these things we may more cumbersomely or have to push more, uh, in parties' payment in the direction of that sort of the corner where the slope, where the site slopes to. And that these things may in fact impede or make our neighbors' life a little more difficult, whether they are legitimate or not. But those aren't the reasons that we're seeking the variance.
So you're seeking the variance purely because you want it?
We're seeking variance. We're seeking variance, thank you.
Well, no, 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 that's what.
No, I did not say.
But Joe is, what Joe is saying is that, okay, you, you, you want, you want this variance, and he's saying, show me why we should approve it.
Fair.
Okay, and you're sitting here, and you're saying, I don't think I need to show you any of that. I, I just want this parking in the front yard, and I think that's all you need to prove, that's what I'm kind of feeling.
Well, I, now, I do not believe that I'm saying that. I mean, I guess in one level, all variance, you know, we're not all level, we can all variance, or some level, we want this. But we, I'm just saying, we are not saying there is no alternative, that's all I'm saying.
No, but we're, I mean, I guess, but we're not asking you for alternatives.
Hold on, please, I'm just saying, and I'm not saying you are not entitled to any and all information you would, you would request, and I'm happy to give. But I am saying that if the county, to me, it would make sense if the county board denied us based on, on reasons that we are not using. We, if we said, there's a drainage problem, trust me, and they said, you didn't give us any information, fair enough. If we said, there are other reasons we are seeking this variance, drainage is not necessarily one of them, then to me, it would not make sense for the county board to say, you didn't give us that information. That's all I'm saying, and I'm not, I mean, I don't feel, I'm not, I don't, I don't feel like I'm presenting some sort of.
No, but the point is, is that you didn't show the variance, or anything, which is not the reason. You see?
Yes, but I also, I mean, I guess I don't know, okay, so we can, I mean, we're presenting the issue, but why we're seeking it, I guess, not.
Well, Joe, if he presents to the county planning board material that the planning board now has, and then gives that stuff to us to look at at the next meeting.
Yeah, but it's really, then go up to the county, which has a full record.
This is gonna go to the county twice. Once for the ZBA, and once for the planning board. So.
Right.
Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what's gonna happen.
Well, yes, because it's on the county road, so we, when, I think the variance on the county road, that would happen. And our site plan approval through the planning board, that would happen. So, I guess the county board, I mean, that's also, that's two, although I know that's, is that a county zoning board and a county planning board? And I know that, I don't believe we have any part of that process, other than it's, no, you don't, yes, we don't all, we don't present it.
It's done all on the record, that's why the county may come back and say, we don't have enough information to give you any assistance here.
So when does, when does our planning board send that material to the county?
Whenever it feels that it has a.
Has it, has it sent to us?
So far, you know, we're just waiting for changes based off of that first meeting.
What's the harm, what's the harm?
This being.
What's the harm in having to public hear?
None, except if you don't get a recommendation from your local planning board, because of timing, our statute says it's presumed to be approved. I don't know what you may or may not want that. The county planning board may say, we don't have enough of the record, and you may give you two issues, and they say, from people like this, who say, I'm concerned about the drainage, if you guys accept this variance, I think that limits my ability to be protected by the planning board.
Do we get copy of that?
And you don't know if that's gonna do that. And my concern is you'll be cast into the position of possibly being this, doing the site plan review, instead of the planning board.
Right, that's not our job, so I think we should not.
So if somebody questions this at a public hearing and says, there will be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, because if this is gonna change, I say this is gonna change my drainage.
So you're saying.
The applicant will make issue of that and say, I don't think it does, and you're gonna end up determining that question.
So you're saying that should be determined before we.
Doesn't, it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be, you may just get cast into the position of doing it, and when all is said and done, I don't know what the answer is going to be on the request for variance in the absence of favorable recommendations.
Is that the case for any, I guess, uh, negative take on one's variance request? If someone says this is gonna cause, uh, you know, sort of excessive light in the evening, or this is gonna be, this is gonna, and then you have to decide if something unrelated to the request is related to the request, and then ultimately has the site plan issue. I mean, I'm not sure.
But that presumes that question, what I have about lighting and drainage, is unrelated to the variance request, it may not be.
It may or may not be unrelated. Yes, but I'm just saying, I mean, is that putting this board in the position of being the planning board, that doesn't.
If, if people come forward and say whether an undesirable change will be produced in the neighborhood, and people come in, like they often do before the planning board decide, here's what I think is gonna be undesirable, drainage, noise. All those things happened before a planning. This board then has to listen to those and sort them out, and make a decision on the variance.
It can, it can. I mean, that seems like there's a, that's almost an unavoidable consequence of the public hearing in general. And I know.
Unless, unless those issues have been taken care of by the planning board, other than the times where we have executives come in and say, I'm concerned about this and this and this, and the planning board says, you need the lighting, so you need the drainage, so whatever, and it starts to lessen those concerns in the public, so that they don't need any more assistance here.
So, so for the board's purpose, and I'm hearing this loud and clear, what we're talking about specific to our point is this piece of asphalt, or whatever that's called, okay? That is either gonna stay or be removed to meet the, whether that stays or, or is gonna be removed, I don't, I don't see how that's gonna impact the drainage one way or the other. It's there, it's already here now, it's there now. So the question is that, it sounds like that drainage or any other issue is more related to what the, what the planning board and other, or, or other, you know, entities are going to decide. We're deciding whether this piece of asphalt needs to stay, and the rest gets put in its place, or it, or, or not. So, to me, that's, we're relegated to that particular decision. I don't see how that is gonna impact all those other decisions. Hey, I don't, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, I mean, yes. I would, but.
A simple remark to that question is that the planning board may not want parking in front of it, and may not get a favorable, you know, because it's not permitted. So they may not want things designed in front. So you may not get a favorable, um, regulation from them?
And then on the other hand, Stacy.
They may want to. They, they say, this is good because it's there, it's not causing any problems, and if we add more asphalt to that, it's gonna create more water problems in this area to be had. They could come back and say, and I don't know if that's the case on this particular lot, but that's something that they may say. So, if you don't go the way Joe's going, you don't know what they're gonna say.
But isn't that, so you petition their positions? And, I mean, I don't drive, so you're saying, if they don't answer, then that's, your statutes mean that that's them saying it's okay?
Yeah.
Well, getting back to whether we should.
It may not be.
And it seems like the time.
The ZBA.
Right. Okay.
Is that.
Back to the point, cut to the chase, are we doing that?
I'm hearing the applicant wanting you to set it down for a public hearing.
I am too.
Without consent, you do not need to set down for a public hearing. Board wants to set it down for a public hearing, set it down.
That's maybe mine.
We'll see what happens.
And we provide additional information, like I can provide, I can email you the planning board's middle and all that in sign of payments to this, I mean, is that, so that the, the zoning board gets more information in advance of this plan, in advance of the public hearing, that separate thing?
It should come fairly quickly.
It might become, it becomes evening.
Because the zone, the planning, county planning board will be done first Wednesday in August.
I, I find it, I'm confused a little bit, that the, the planning board application, which, which, it would be, I mean, I guess, would that, that would be set to the zoning, the county zoning boards, let's say.
County planning board.
So you're.
County zoning board.
Okay. But they'll get that while it has not been set up yet from the planning board?
The planning board. We have to shut it down.
You're going to go twice to the county planning board, but are once from the ZBA, and once from your, from the. So it's not that our zoning board, our request for variance in zoning board's appeals is gonna go to the county planning board, and then our site plan application, which is for the planning board, the county planning board. But the planning, the, I mean, but our site plan application, which is not complete at this point, is going to go to the county board before the planning board of Newark has said, this is it, that doesn't.
No, you're correct.
Oh, that's the worst.
Okay.
But you're not, but you're not, I guess what I don't understand is why would you be providing them?
We wouldn't be sending the planning board file, we would be sending the ZBA file.
You'd send the planning board file, or send the ZBA file?
Right.
You would send this?
Yes.
Send this?
Or any other materials that you have submitted to the ZBA.
So if I submit to you for your information, the planning board's site plan application that is in process, that becomes part of the ZBA application, you're saying, it's sent to them?
It would, it would go up with our.
I agree. Okay. That seems, that seems odd to me, that then they would be reviewing a site plan application, in some sense. At one phase, which is not complete, and another phase, which is more complete, at one phase, which is as reference for a zoning board variance, and then another phase for an actual site plan application. To me, that would mean that it would seem like it would be wise to not send it to them, not wise, if you know what I'm, where it doesn't, that's not, but I guess yours is asking that it's, that it's remaining this, and that you're not.
That's why I was asking if you want this to go to a public hearing now, and make all those submissions now without more time in the planning board to address all of those issues, so that when this board gets it, when the county planning board gets it, everybody's got, well, that's really the full submission.
Do you have any plans of putting lighting, exterior lighting on this park, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I can tell you, I was a member of the county planning board, and I can tell you that at the roadside, you are not supposed to exceed one building.
Yes. Which is not part of this zoning application, but we do not exceed.
One building.
We do not exceed where it's.
Right, but if you, if you were to send this plan as it is to the county planning board now, where there's no lighting detail.
That would be a question, that's what I'm saying. They would, they would say, what is the lighting?
If there's no lighting detail, I can tell you what they're gonna do with it. But I'm not gonna tell you what they're gonna do, if you can understand what I'm saying.
And what's this board gonna do with the variance request? With the answer to the question, if the variance is granted, do you want to put lighting on that second?
Well, that's some.
Well, that's gonna be one of the things that you will need to consider.
That's what I would need to know, is that within that fifty yard setback, what lighting are you going to put there, and to what intensity is it going to be?
Now, whose job are you doing?
The planning board.
They're doing.
Which is, you know, but if we would say, unless, I would say, all lighting is within.
And I'm gonna advise you, you should not, you cannot assert the authority of the planning board to do site plan review, and leave you but one choice with respect to that.
Yes, as it's presented thus, yes, okay. So if the county planning board receives it with, with, uh, an application, that all new lighting will be in performance with requirements, there's a lighting plan, here's a foot candle at the property belonging, I guess that's what amounts to the zoning board, the planning board application, then they'd say, okay. And so this element, which is not related to the zoning board variance request, is being met. I guess that's what I understand, is would the, the planning board just say, this person wants to retain parking within the front yard setback, but we don't know what their lighting plan is, and so we're not going to authorize this? Isn't that, I guess that is.
As you are in front of us now.
I guess, I mean, the answer is, we have, I mean, legally, we have to provide our current lighting board's middle, so as to resolve, I guess, in between, but it does seem like it's raising, it's, it's.
As, as you are in front of us now, you can do the same thing at the county planning board.
Is that, I thought it was just a county board to board thing.
You know, you can talk to them also.
Okay. That's how I understand, but I don't believe it.
Is there any reason why it wouldn't be a better idea to postpone the next meeting until September? To give everybody a chance to review all the material? So instead of coming to us in August?
I'm not sure, I guess, but at this point, and, I mean, what is our sort of timeframe, I mean, obviously, this is it.
Well, well, maybe we can help, because I, I know a lot of times the applicant doesn't wanna get set back another month, and not keep.
I agree.
Set for public hearing in August. Or you can entertain an, a motion, set for public hearing in August. Dennis Doyle is the chair of the Ulster County Planning. He's one of the most accessible people, in my opinion, in county government. You can reach him just about anytime unless Dennis is away on vacation. If you call Dennis Doyle, tell him who you are, tell him that you've been down here before this board about board, and how it's been, but he'll agree with you and say, yeah, I'm not surprised. Talk to, talk to Dennis Doyle. Maybe get Dennis's view on this, might even wanna talk to the chair of planning.
Well, that's what I think, so if I talk to Michael, yeah, so if I call, if I seek out Michael Palameno, Dennis Doyle, ask them to provide a response for this, for the.
Or all this same discussion again about doing this or not.
All right, and they.
If the applicant then decides that he wants to adjourn the public hearing and come back and have it set in August meeting, you can notify us, cancel the public hearing, or, as you want, or whatever.
Okay, so we set the public hearing and cancel it.
So the U B can use a lot of time in resolution, they set your public hearing, and what is it, unless the applicant advises, unless the applicant advises that they wanna postpone yours.
Cancel.
Or that they don't plan on appearing, and I don't wanna do that, I don't wanna advertise a public hearing. And then.
Well, they advertise it.
How long does, what, what kind of notice does need to give you for, for you to cancel the public hearing? What do you mean, to cancel a public hearing? Time frame?
Time frame, you can technically cancel it at any point.
But he's, he's gonna notice all of the neighbors have to get notice that this.
I mean, the suggestion would be to keep it open, to just have it and keep it open, if we finally still don't have what we need from the planning board.
The only, the one concern I would have about that is because he has to get notice to all of the surrounding owners who we already know have some questions.
Well, that would seem like something good.
And put up signings, and do all that stuff, and everybody's gonna wanna see the application. And those people are gonna come down and see this. And they're gonna think they're coming to a public hearing in August about that. And then we're gonna say to the applicant, decided that he doesn't wanna make a presentation, and wants it postponed.
Well, I mean, I.
It may not be a good thing to do.
Fair enough, although I believe also, I mean, it would be, would, no difficulty for us to be able to address someone's questions of drainage in advance, or in a presentation, I mean, we could. I mean, I, our preference would be to set the public hearing, I'll contact them, I'll contact the planning board, I'll contact Dennis Doyle, I'll see if they can provide a position, so that we don't have this issue, then they have a clear, or they need more information. I mean, and this all I assume can happen ultimately quickly, so that in advance, the public notice kind of sizes it up, which is, I don't know if it's.
And then, like, tell them no way to do what you wanted.
Yeah, I mean, so we can sort of move quickly.
Can we open it and entertain public comment, based on that, and then keep it open?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
If they make use of metals?
We can.
All right, may I have a question?
For.
Yeah. To set the public hearing on this applicant for next month, August the eleventh.
Okay, Ulster, you just, my advice would be to price it.
Right.
Because you just do a curveball, I mean, I think. If you keep it, keep it open, means don't go to public hearing, or just?
No, no, it has a public hearing, and then we keep it open again. No, we would have the public hearing, then we'd keep it open again until September, and allow people to come back in September and comment on anything additional that they might be.
Okay.
Unless, unless he supplies all that information, before my August eleventh.
Okay, all right.
So if the public felt they didn't have enough information, we would keep it, because we say, oh, the public does not have enough information, so we're not gonna make a decision. We need to.
Right, all right, you want to add that motion? Second? All in favor?
All right.
All right, okay, set for August eleventh. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all, please.
Is there's any old business, new business, sometimes business, in this state of issues? You need to do that? No?
If I may just add, or Pat, if I may just add, administrative business, I wanted to thank the board for entertaining us and allowing us to add Lenny Loza to the ZBA. I hope you all agree that he'll be a great addition to it, and I thank everyone for welcoming him, I see him with his files, smiling already. So all you know, this is territory he's been in pretty early, so I, I wanted, as representative of town board, I would welcome Lenny, and thank you very much for.
Thank you for coming.
Well, we appreciate the time, and so do you, so, thank you very much, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for me, you guys all know how to find me.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. I make a little.
Okay.
Yeah, Lee?
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, second.